All right, the time is 7:20 PM. We'll now reconvene back into open session. I want to first say thank you all for joining us tonight. Just a reminder that the meetings of the board are open to the public, but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBL ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in regular meetings to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations from the superintendent. The board does receive agenda items and agendas on all supporting documentation several days in advance of regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of a regular meeting. Therefore, LinkedIn discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item. But as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. Want to remind everybody also, there are also our students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that said, we will move into our first item, and that's going to be, we're going to introduce our ROTC, UMBL High School, so we can post our colors. If you would all please stand for sergeant.
Colors, up, stand, go! Marry colors! Forward, march! Up high, march! Colors, march! Right, march! Present, march!
Senator, are we supposed to post colors?
Please post.
Forward, march! Right, march! Forward, march! Up high, march! Colors, march! Right, march! March! Keep alert! Present, march!
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Forward, march! Lay, march! Forward, march!
Want to ask if you would please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated. Dr. Fagan, do we have any commendations or recognitions tonight?
We do. First, we will start with our inspiring moments. One of the things that's very special about UMBL ISD is that it is family. It goes beyond the walls of our schools into the community like nothing I've seen before. It's something we really want to preserve, to grow, and have flourish. Since our last school board meeting, we've come together as UMBL ISD family for convocation and for centennial celebration kickoff. One of the hashtags we're encouraging this year is hashtag #IAMUMBLE. Let's take a look at tonight's inspiring moment video.
I am UMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
Hashtag #IAMUMBLE.
I am UMBLE. I was born and raised in UMBL. UMBL has always been a place where it's just, it's been home. Like, that's where I always knew I wanted to be, where I always wanted to end up.
When I was fifteen, I moved to UMBL from Jamaica because of the family environment, seeing how teachers here really cared about me and really took the time to get to know me and to help me develop as a person. And so I knew, once I finished my teaching program, that if I could teach anywhere that I wanted, if I had my pick, I knew I wanted to come back to Quest and to UMBL and to teach here. Hashtag #IAMUMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
Even though UMBL ISD has grown, those of us that have lived in UMBL all of our lives understand we are still a family, a very close-knit family.
After working in UMBL for several years, I had the opportunity to pursue leadership in a neighboring school district. I was very excited about that opportunity. But when I got there, I realized what I was really missing. I could not wait to get back to UMBL ISD because the family culture that UMBL ISD creates brings joy back into the classroom.
I was blessed with the opportunity to be able to come to Summer Creek High School when it first opened and be part of the first graduating class in the history of the school. All the teachers, staff, coaches made it feel like home for us. I knew I wanted to be a teacher, and the first place that popped into my head was I wanted to come back here because of that family atmosphere I wanted to be part of, that I wanted to give to kids the same thing that I got.
I just love the fact that everything about this district feels like family. Doesn't matter if you're new, doesn't matter if you've been here for a while, everything is family.
I am UMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
I.
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 I'm UMBLE.
I am UMBLE.
Hashtag #IAMUMBLE.
Thanks to Jonathan Fry and our Public Communications Department for capturing all of those images and putting together that video celebrating the UMBL ISD family. Superstaffers will be back next month in October, so we're going to move on from there and have our presentation of our Secondary Teachers of the Year. Tonight is a great privilege to honor extraordinary professionals making the difference in the lives of students. We're proud to recognize our Secondary Teachers of the Year this evening, and next month, we will celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. I'd like to ask Ms. Melissa Hayhurst and Mr. Trey Kramer, Assistant Superintendents, to come to the podium and introduce our Secondary Teachers of the Year.
It's a great privilege of mine to be able to introduce the secondary, the middle school teachers of the year. There seems to be a pattern tonight, a theme, if you will, of #IAMUMBLE, and I think these are some of the best of #IAMUMBLE. My, like I said, it's my pleasure to introduce them. So we will begin with Atascocita Middle School, Teacher of the Year Bailey Leoni. Bailey? Franklin Middle School, Michael Block. So Mr. Block is also being honored as one of the district finalists. From UMBL Middle, Joshua Grimes. And Mr. Grimes is also being honored as a district finalist. From Kingwood Middle, Matthew Smithson. From Riverwood Middle, Daniel Green. So Mr. Green is also being honored as the District Secondary Teacher of the Year. From Ross Sterling, Simon Perry. From Timberwood Middle, Michelle Kirkpatrick. From Wood Creek Middle, Amber Wall. And so Ms. Wall is not here tonight, but we will get her plaque to her. And so again, if we could please congratulate our Middle School Teachers of the Year.
Good evening. It's with great pride and pleasure that I get to announce the High School Teachers of the Year. We'll start out with Atascocita High School, Ms. Katie Spence. Ms. Spence is also being honored as a district finalist. Next up, UMBL High School, David Watkins. Mr. Watkins is not here tonight, but we'll get his plaque to him. Next, from Kingwood High School, Miguel Carlos. Next, Kingwood Park High School, Ms. Karen Raspberry. Ms. Raspberry is also being honored as a district finalist. Next, Quest Early College High School, Mr. Jeffrey Alexander. Next, from Summer Creek High School, Ms. Terry Hart. Ms. Hart is not able to be here tonight, and we'll get her plaque to her. Next, from our Cates Center, Ms. Amy Walker. Then we have our last, from our Community Learning Center, and it's Mr. Kevin Krueger. Kevin could not be here tonight, but a round of applause for him, and we'll get our plaque to him. We'll take a picture. All right. Congratulations again, and at this time, these folks have worked all day long. We're going to give them an opportunity to exit out. So how about another round of applause for all of our Teachers of the Year at the secondary level? Thank you.
Ready? Give them time to get out. Okay, next on the agenda, we will have questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items and any other matters. The board encourages comments from the citizens of the district, and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or representative of a group, may do so following the procedures outlined on the agenda. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue is mentioned and listed on the agenda tonight, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. First on my list here, I think I have Kathy Belnap. Is she Kathy? All right, annual minions, yes, all right.
So Dr. Fagan, members of the board, administrators, teachers, parents, and community supporters. I am the chairman of the board of, or chairman of the UMBL ISD, UMBL, sorry, UMBL ISD Golf Classic Golf Tournament. This year marked the ninth year of the UMBL ISD Golf Classic. Last year, it rained on tournament day, and I thought that was the worst thing that could possibly happen for our tournament. Well, Mother Nature intervened, and we all know what happened after that. Several of our players' homes were flooded, clubs were damaged, lives were forever changed, and two schools became one. After speaking with A.D. Troy Kite and the coaches, we decided to move forward with the idea that any money we raised for the tournament would benefit our program. I can say without a doubt, our families, friends, and UMBL ISD community came through for us this year in a big way. After only having 325 players the year it rained, I never imagined we would sell out last year with 432 players. We actually turned folks away. This year could not have happened without the support of our community and our sponsors. Sponsors see the vision and understand not only the cost of running the golf programs, but that golf is a sport that teaches our students honor, sportsmanship, and being part of a team, handling successes and failures, and learning the skills of a sport that will be valuable to each one of these 177 students in their professional careers. With the generosity of our sponsors, along with last year's VIP sponsor, Paul Davis Reconstruction, APMG, Waste Management, Charity Golf International, Diamonds of the Rough, Chick-fil-A, and a whole big old list after that, our community came together to reach our fundraising goal. If it were not for the local support, our program would not thrive. In 2017, 2018, this golf year came with a lot of success. We proudly announced the following accomplishments, and there's a lot here. The Kingwood High School Boys District Champs had a regional, they were district champs, had a regional runner-up, and took sixth place in state. The Kingwood High School Girls were district champs, had a regional runners-up, and took ninth in state. Atascocita Boys were district runner-up, regional third place, and took 11th place in state. Atascocita High School Girls had an individual qualify for regionals. Summer Creek Girls had an individual qualify for regionals. Kingwood Park Boys were district runner-up and took sixth place in regionals. And the K Park Girls were district champs, regional runners-up, and took sixth place in state. This was the first time all four schools were represented at the regional tournament. That's huge. We had seven out of the eight teams that could possibly go, go. That's a big feat. We also sent four teams to the state championship, which is incredible. From the tournament, we were able to award two memorial scholarships in the memory of lost teammates. Our scholarship winners were Grayson Blunt and Sam LaViss. They were both from Kingwood High School. We also had two students from Kingwood High School, my daughter Mary Beth and Grayson Blunt, receive golf scholarships to college, as well as Ransom Jacobson and Clark Bagsby from Atascocita High School. The history of the UMBL ISD Golf Classic has been one of great success. In the past nine years, the tournament has been able to raise in excess of $415,000 for the district golf programs to offset the expensive costs of programs. That's tournament fees, transportation, housing expenses, teacher aides, teacher educator, coaches' education, all kinds of stuff. On behalf of the student golfers, coaches, and parents, we are pleased to present the Board of Trustees a check in amount of $50,000.
All right, that was good. Okay, next on the list here, let me flip my page here. Caitlin Sitten. Caitlin, there is Caitlin.
Hello, UMBL ISD School Board members, Dad, Dr. Fagan, Cabinet and Community members. My name is Caitlin Sitten. Today, I wanted to talk to you about something amazing, spectacular, and heartwarming. September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, so I thought it would be a great month to kick off my next service project, Outplay Cancer. When I started my first service project, Hats Off for Cure, I was inspired by Mr. Scott Ahart with the L3 Foundation to make a difference. I strive every year to continue to make a difference and to help children battle cancer. I hope to bring them some joy as they battle this horrible disease. My goal with Outplay Cancer is to collect as many gently-used board games, video games, and DVD movies. I will be collecting them until December 17th, just in time for me to donate them to Texas Children's before Christmas. I want to challenge each of our school board members, yes, you too Dad, Dr. Fagan, Cabinet members, and community, to help spread the word of my new service project and to make a donation. Please help me spread some joy through the halls. Please help me spread some joy through the halls of Texas Children's. I have three drop-off locations, Edward Jones, Robertson, Thanks to My Main Man, KNS Sportswear, and Stacy's Dance Studio. I will also be accepting donations at the L3 Turkey 5K on Thanksgiving Day at Kingwood Town Center. You can also follow me on Twitter, @OutPlayCancer, and Facebook, @HatsOffForCure. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten. Next, we'll have LeAnn Kessler. LeAnn, okay, there she is.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Fagan, guests, school district employees, and relatives, and everyone who comes. My name is LeAnn Kessler, and I am a volunteer with the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, and I'm sure that I'm not giving you any news tonight. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the rodeo, but I had just a couple of points that I wanted to emphasize tonight. I thought it was good timing. The Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo started awarding scholarships in 1932. And since that time, they have awarded over $430 million to seniors and education programs throughout the state. Last year, or this past year, 2018, they awarded 750 scholarships just this past year. Nine of those right here in UMBL ISD. The show is fully committed to education, and it's almost completely operated through the efforts of volunteers. There's 33,000, probably more than that, but around 33,000 volunteers who run the show. And I can't even imagine what that costs in personnel and payroll, but all of that savings goes directly to students and education programs. And to me, I think it's an incredibly worthy cause. We do this in conjunction with very generous supporters and donors and sponsors throughout Houston. They give us opportunities, and they give us support, and they give us financial support, to promote the rodeo, to raise funds for scholarship programs. And all these volunteers, they do everything. They sell things, they clean up things, they provide emergency services, they handle livestock. I don't do that part. They just do everything, and they're a wonderful group of people. 900 of those volunteers work and serve on a committee called the Houston Metro of Texas Committee. And the mission of our committee is to promote the show and to raise money. Pretty simple. I serve on a subcommittee strictly devoted to UMBL Kingwood and to the UMBL ISD School District. We hold four events every year, and again, our mission is to promote the rodeo, to encourage community involvement, community awareness, and of course, to raise money for the scholarship program. All in all, the 900 volunteers that serve along with me, we have 85 throughout Harris County and all the surrounding counties. So if we don't have one here in UMBL Kingwood, you're going to be hard-pressed not to find one somewhere throughout the year. We work all year round except for March, and then we get to go to the rodeo. So we are one of the few committees that don't actually work during the rodeo. Every public school that, every public school, high school within those districts is entitled to earn at least one scholarship, at least one. As I mentioned earlier, UMBL ISD was awarded nine last year. We would love to see that increase, 18 to 20. I mean, they're $20,000 scholarships, so it's no small amount. And I have never met one recipient that thought, yeah, he's all right, thanks. They're all very grateful. I've met many other recipients, and I have to say, I'm sure you're not surprised, but they're pretty impressive, the seniors that I have met and the recipients, and they're also very grateful. And I truly cherish those opportunities when I actually get to meet them. The rodeo offers 11 types of scholarships. We serve the metropolitan type, but there are 11 types. And the application timeline and the application phase for this year starts in November. And that was one of the things I wanted to emphasize this evening. I want to encourage the schools and the administrators and the scholarship advisors, and I'm sure I'm missing somebody, and I'm sure I'm not mentioning the right titles, but I want to encourage all seniors to go out there and look at the qualifications. There's 11 different types of scholarships. And they all have varying qualifications. Go out there and look at the qualifications. Download the application, fill it out, and submit it. The submission deadline is, I have it here, February 5th, right? And then there will be some supporting docs, but the submission is online, and it's due February 5th. But the submission is online, and it's due February 5th. And I just want to encourage all of the high schools, to encourage all of the seniors to go out there and submit an application, because all of our volunteer efforts, we can do a lot of things, but we can't apply for the scholarship for you. You guys have to do that. And so I encourage you, and that's one of the things that I wanted to do tonight, is to emphasize and encourage you to go out there and fill out those applications and get your name in there, because $20,000 is a lot of money, and it's for a great cause. The second thing I wanted to mention is a little bit self-serving. So we do have four events every year, and I would love it if I could get people to come out and join us. I'm not asking for help, I'm not asking for you to donate. I would just love for you to come out and join us. We love to recognize and celebrate our educators and our administration and our Board. It shows the community that it doesn't stop at the door. You guys are in it for the long haul. We love to meet you because we feel like sometimes we're on the outside. We don't do our events at the schools. Some of us don't, I don't have children in high school, so I rarely get into a school. So I would like to invite you all to come out and join us at one of our events. The next one we're having is October 20th. It's horseshoes and washers and bunco and all kinds of fun stuff. I left you some flyers, but if anyone else is interested, our email is umbelkingwoodmetro@gmail.com. I would be more than crazy happy to see all of you, any of you. And I extend an invitation, just let me know, and I will reserve a ticket for you, no problem. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. And again, umbelkingwoodmetro@gmail.com. If I can be of any assistance to point you to the resources you need, I am happy to do so.
Thank you, LeAnn. Okay, next, we'll go ahead and have individual comments by Board members. I'm gonna start on the end, so I'm gonna start with Mr. Carney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, just wanted to say congratulations to our Secondary Teachers of the Year as well as our High School Teachers of the Year. Really, really appreciate everything you guys do for our students. I know you sacrifice time and lots and lots of effort, and you really make a big difference. So thank you. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lamont Dixon.
I would also like to congratulate the Secondary Teachers of the Year, and also to thank the UMBL ISD Golf Classic for the check presentation for $50,000. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lopez.
The same, the wonderful teachers that we have in our district. It's fabulous that we recognize them and want to congratulate them on that recognition. Welcome back. We're now back in school, football season's here, school season's here. So look forward to a wonderful, uneventful school year as opposed to what we were dealing with this time last year. So I hope everyone has a great school year, 2018, 2019 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Conrad.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to, first of all, congratulate our President, Mr. Cunningham, on his Tazby Board Officer nomination. Thank you for serving on that board and representing our district. And also, today, my heart is really heavy after learning of the passing of my friend and former Master Trustee Ernest Parton. He was a pillar in the Boyd ISD community, served on their board for 12 years, many as president, one of the most humble men I've ever met. So I just wanted to send condolences from our UMBL ISD family to the Boyd ISD community. I know he will have a lasting impact on generations to come.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Mr. Sitten.
Yeah, I'll do what my colleagues have said. Congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year that were honored tonight, and then Kathy Belnap and her group for the work they do with the golf booster clubs for the school district. I see we have another Boy Scout troop here. What's our troop number? 974, thank y'all for being here, welcome. And then to my daughter, Kaitlyn, I'm so proud of her. This is something that she's done on her own, not from me or her mom. And in the four years, she's donated over 3,000 hats, over 500 pairs of socks to Texas Children's. And this last donation, she asked, "Is there anything else you need?" And they said, "Glad you asked." The kids need games. And so that's what she's doing this year, is collecting games and to take down and to put a smile on some kids' faces that are going through a really hard time. So I'm extremely a proud dad for what she's done and continues to do. LeAnn, the rodeo's dear to my heart. Been a member of the Houston Rodeo Group for 17 years. Been a volunteer, was a volunteer for 10 until I was elected to this position, and something that had to give, and that's what I gave up. But thank you for your words, and thank you for the flyer on y'all's events. And anyone that can get out and support the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, please do. You know, if you get out there and you start looking at some of the school art, I'm amazed at some of the talent that is in the greater metro area students. Dr. Hodgkinson, the new principal at Westlake, his son had art displayed throughout the entire rodeo season last year. Tremendous artist. But they do a great job for our kids, for our students, and the scholarship opportunities are tremendous. So thank you for being here and sharing those words. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten. And I also just want to echo what everybody else has said. Congratulations to all our secondary teachers. Ms. Conrad, thank you for the congratulations. I'm looking forward with the will of the delegates from across the state of Texas serving in this role. I also want to give a little shout-out. I was a little late getting here, but I tell you, I was with a group of current and former teachers over at the ISC Building, and so we just had a fabulous time. And time just got away from me. So I was rushing to get here, and lo and behold, it was an accident. And so I tell you, I saw all of the South Side of UMBL ISD trying to get over here, but we're here. So with that, I'm going to give it to you, Dr. Fagan. Anything from the administration?
Thanks, I appreciate that. So I wanted to share one thing. You may remember that UMBL ISD was selected as one of 20 districts in the state of Texas to be part of the Local Accountability Pilot that TEA was sponsoring, part of a conversation that we're having statewide about, you know, if not just our, what would accountability look like, and where can it go from here? And that's been a very challenging conversation because we're very stuck in a model that we can't seem to get out of. And I'm proud to say that UMBL ISD is now one of 10 districts that is actually submitting a plan forward to TEA that has been preliminarily sort of approved and broadens out the perspective about how our schools, our campuses, our students, our staff are doing. It doesn't get us where we want to be at all, but it's certainly a step forward in that journey. And I just want to say thank you to, we have incredible teachers, principals, directors, leaders that are working on this project. And it's a big, heavy lift in addition to all of the sort of normal work that they do to try to sort of create the future of assessment in American education and Texas education. And to be one of 10 districts in a state with 1,200 districts, to put forward a plan, to take that risk and say, "Well, we're not satisfied with the current system, so we're willing to take the risk and be part of a system that's different," is a huge step forward for the entire profession. And so Dr. Ann Johnson and her team, all of our principals, teachers all across the district, they're working on unique literacy pilots, various things moving forward, Portrait of a Graduate in the spirit of the UMBL ISD community. Couldn't be more proud. And I just, I said this joke this morning to the principals. I said, "So let me see, if TEA started out with 20 districts and only 10 submitted a plan, did they get an F? I just wondered." Anyway, that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next, we'll go ahead and move into our update on our Board Association and Committees, starting off with the Audit Committee. Audit Committee has no report. I will move on to the Boards and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Mr. Lopez. No report. Next, we'll have the Building and Planning Committee chaired by Ms. Martina Lamont Dixon.
Well, you should have all received a copy of the Board Building and Planning summary. But there was a few items I would like to point out. One, I believe as of yesterday, all of the naditoriums are up and running.
They're up there.
Yes, okay. Thank you, thank you. Also, the ag facility, the land is under contract, and the transportation facility land is in the process of being finalized. That's an update from the summary that I sent out. And the last item I have is the engineer recommendations, and the program management recommendations will be presented at the October Board Meeting. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Next, we'll have Mr. Robert Sitten, our Chair of Finance Committee.
Yeah, the only thing I would report on this month is we've given Mike Seal, CFO, the opportunity to go out and negotiate on some alternative investments for the school district. Very conservative, not at risk, but would give us a small percentage difference in our savings. And I believe we're going to be ready to come back at the next Board Meeting. Is that right, Mike? Or we hope to at the next Board Meeting? Yeah, okay. That's all I have for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sitten. Our Advocacy Committee, Ms. Morrison's not here. Mr. Sitten, you want to take that, because I left early from that meeting.
Yes, so we had our first inaugural Advocacy Committee meeting here in the room, in the boardroom, on Monday, August 27th. We had 17 different community members here to participate. State Representative Dan Huberty, Dr. Katherine Pearson, Kingwood College President, UMBL City Manager Jason Stube, the Office of Houston City Councilmember Dave Martin was represented. We also had folks from Precinct Four Constable's office, Harris County Sheriff's Office, Harris County Fire Marshal, Houston Police Department, UMBL Police Department, Kingwood Medical Center, and Memorial Hermann Northeast Hospital, along with the Lake Houston Area Chamber of Commerce and Lake Houston Economic Development Partnership. It was a fabulous first meeting. And just so you know, the idea behind this first meeting was to talk about school safety, get all the stakeholders in the room, talk about how they collaborate with one another, how they handle first responders, those type issues. What could we be doing different? What's happening in other areas and other school districts? How can we implement some of those ideas as well? And I know that Nancy and Chief Cook are talking about some things prior to our next meeting, which will be in December, on December 10th. And we hope to compile the information that we get from some of these other entities on what we're doing right, what we need to improve on, what other things are out there that we need to be looking at. Because this Board and Dr. Fagan, we, as a team of eight, we have committed a lot of financial resources, a lot of man-hours to safe and secure schools as a priority to make sure that our kids are safe on a daily basis when they walk onto one of our facilities and campuses. So I'm really excited. Dr. Fagan, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
I thought it was a fantastic meeting. As we all know, we prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And we know that in the event of a significant situation, all of these jurisdictions will have to come together at a moment's notice and work together. And so Chief Cook is committed to training together, drilling together, doing various things to ensure all the basic foundational components of safety are in place, even when you have multiple jurisdictions that have to come together and work together. And I too thought it was a really fabulous first meeting. Representative Huberty was very open to, as we start this process of really working together, if there's anything legislatively that could be improved, he's very open to hearing that and taking that into the next session, which is one of Mrs. Morrison's commitments also.
Yeah, I would do that last point. I'm glad you brought that up. With State Representative Huberty in the group, the one thing we asked him was, as we go through this, to help us craft the language for specific legislation that we feel like that we're going to need in this next session. And he was very humbled by that. And, you know, a lot of times when you talk to a politician, they have all the answers, but he's here to listen, he's here to give suggestions, and also hear what we have to say as well. So I appreciated that.
Got just a couple of questions, advocacy-related. Do we have our two delegates for the Delegate Assembly?
We do.
Okay, okay. And then also related on the same event, do we have trustees attending the Fast Growth Luncheon? I know you're otherwise...
Yeah, we do. I think Karen is...
You're going to be in Leadership Tazby?
Right.
Okay.
Karen's doing the RSVP.
Oh, I'm it? I just want to make sure we had two there.
Agreed.
Well, you're one, and I'm also going to be attending S-Band.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure we were covered there, okay.
Legislative, okay, good. Thank you, Ms. Sitten. Education Foundation, Mr. Carney.
Yeah, real quick update regarding the annual golf tournament held by the foundation. So last year, the tournament had to be canceled due to Hurricane Harvey. So we're picking that back up again this year. So mark your calendar for Friday, November 9th, at Oakhurst Golf Club. So if you enjoy golf and you want to donate to a good cause, please come out. The proceeds from the fundraiser will be used to award innovative education grants throughout UMBL ISD, so it's a great cause and a great time as well. You can register online at umbelisdfoundation.org.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Ms. Lamont Dixon, Kingwood, Superior Native Health Council?
Just one major takeaway. Chuck Gilman, he's the Director of Flood Management of the San Jacinto River Authority. He provided updates on the SJRA operations of Lake Conroe. And one of the biggest sticking points that he mentioned is that they are doing a regional watershed study to help prevent future flooding. So very interesting meeting. Looking forward to see what comes of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dixon. I'm going to keep you right there. I asked you to assist me on the action items from closed session. And first, we'll have a Level 3 Parent Complaint Appeal, Policy Board Policy, F, N, and G.
Mr. President, I move to uphold the administration's recommendation on the Level 3 Parent Complaint Appeal as presented in closed session.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned, second. All have heard the motion, are there any questions? Seeing none, the usual sign of voting, all in favor? All opposed, same? Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Dixon, Personnel Recommendations?
I move to approve the administration's Personnel Recommendations that's presented in closed session with addendum.
All right. We've already had it, it's been properly motioned, second. Mr. Sitten moved it. All have heard, are there any questions? All in favor? All opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Just want to look at this, okay. We don't have the alphabet tonight, so that's good. So, Ms. Dixon, I might ask if you will, help me with the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Five, under 5A, the Approval Amendments. Okay, consent. 5B, Policy Revisions, Final Action. Consent. C, Contractor Fratern Stadium Baseball and Softball Renovations. Okay. D, Additional Contingency Staff Positions for 2018-19. Consent. E, Memorandum of Understanding with UMBL ISD Education Foundation. Consent. F, Removal of Tax Accounts from Delequid Tax Roll. Okay, consent. G, Tax Refunds. Okay, consent. H, Educational Consultants Exceeding $50,000 in the Aggregate or $25,000 Annually. That is consent. I, Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the Aggregate or $25,000 Annually, excuse me, Individually. Consent. J, Online Subscription Service, Software Programs Exceeding $50,000 in the Aggregate or $25,000 Individually. Consent. K, Budget Transfers and Amendments, Including the Release of Carry Forward Incapacities and 10 New Contingency Positions. Consent. L, bond fund transfers and amendments. That is consent. And if you would, Ms. Dixon, read that back to me in the form of a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the following items by consent, five A through five L.
Have a second. All right, the motion's second. All in favor? All opposed by the same? It carries. Okay, any action items? I don't see any action items, Dr. Fagan. I guess now we'll move forward here on some information items. Board members, you have gotten the revisions on the policy update, the information concerning the Tasby policy update, the delinquent tax report? You want, you want, you want to go over that, the delinquent tax report? It's information only. I mean, we normally have them up here, but it's just information.
Depends how bad they want to, this would be the first time in thirteen years that they, I haven't seen them do it, but that's fine.
Greg, come on up. Come on, come on up.
Greg, just do the, just do the high level. You don't need to go through page by page. Just the high level.
Mr. Greg Eas, once again. And where is Donnie?
Donnie has a torn rotator cuff, and then something wrong with his neck, so they can't operate on the... So he says he can sit down for fifteen minutes, and then he's in a lot of pain and he has to lie down in the middle of the boardroom, so. He can stay home.
All right, board members, you should have your form here. So Greg, go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. This is the twenty seventeen tax year calendar. See, in October last year, your tax bills were mailed. In February twenty eighteen, they go delinquent, and then they start getting charged penalty interest then, six percent penalty, one percent interest every month. That penalty maxes out at twelve percent by July. In May, your tax office mails out a notice warning that a collection penalty will be charged in July if the taxpayer doesn't pay. And then July, the tax penalty is charged, and then the tax file gets turned over to us to work on. And the penalty, the collection penalty is paid to us after it's collected from the taxpayer. So you don't pay anything to us unless it's been paid by the taxpayer. This is your collections for the twenty seventeen tax year, up through June thirtieth, so right before it gets turned over to us. And you see, your taxpayers paid over ninety-eight point six one percent of your tax levy. And that just leaves one point three nine percent left that's not paid as of July one. And this shows your, the performance over time. You can see that even over, about ninety and a half percent or higher for several years now. And this is what gets turned over to us year by year. Seventeen, it's slightly less than last year. And this is how much we've collected of the first twelve months for each year that gets turned over to us. You can see last year, the twenty sixteen taxes got turned over to us in July last year, and we're showing over seventy-one percent of it's collected so far. So sixteen is the tax year that, of course, got affected by Hurricane Harvey. So when that happened in late August, I was sitting at home waiting for the office to open. Of course, none of it affected all of our clients in the area. We had no idea how things would turn out. But your taxpayers ended up, we started off ramping up slowly after we came back to work, but by the end, your taxpayers came through, and our collections ended up being pretty good. You can see for year seventeen, which got billed last year, you've collected ninety-eight point six one percent, which was higher than the year before. So despite the disaster, your UMBLE ISD taxpayers are doing well. And basically, this is just showing what we're working on for the twenty seventeen tax year. Our firm concentrates on the twenty seventeen tax year, the new tax year that gets turned over to us. We figure if we do as hard as we can early on, then we'll just end up having steady, high collections just indefinitely. And this is just a picture of all your, all your taxes. You see, you have a lot of deferrals that's slowly going up every year as the district gets older. But other than that, really nothing unusual, or anything I'm concerned about. This is how much is due for each tax year. So of course seventeen's the highest, because that got turned over to us a few months ago. And then, of course, it goes down over time. And other than that, really nothing unusual. Our collections, despite as nervous as I was after the Harvey, your collections for each year ended up being, ended up being just about what I'd expect in the normal year. We did start off slowly. We didn't send out a mass mailing like we usually would in September, and we didn't file lawsuits as many or as quickly as we normally would, or make as many phone calls to start with, and we just sort of ramped up slowly, and all of our, you know, all of our collectors live here, so they understood the situation, understood if someone called with a problem, we made sure we noted, so we can explain to the client, here's this account that we're taking slowly or not working on, or give an extra month. And just working with anyone that could call in, we'll work with us. We worked with them. And that, really nothing unusual. Despite the terrible disaster, the district, the collections ended up being good, and it looks like we're doing well this year so far.
Mr. Lopez?
All right, thank you.
We have a financial item, I mean, a information item on C, Financial Services Reports. Any questions? Or if not, I believe you can, with Dr. Fagan, committee member, Ms. Siddon. Okay. Consideration of future topics, future board business. Anything on the parking lot?
I just want to point your attention. I didn't want to draw you out of there during the committee once, but if you'll click on the library button on the top right corner, you should see your committee reports on the left side.
I did, I did it this afternoon.
Did that work?
Well, mine's didn't work, though. I went in there and I didn't see it when I, when I clicked on, this is right here.
Once you're logged in, you should be able to see the...
Oh, the one below it, no wonder, okay.
Just want y'all to experience it to see if that's something you might...
Wait a minute. Okay, 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 yeah. Bring, yeah, bring instructions, because I clicked on this other one.
Well, the, the point is now you don't have to search your email. All your committee reports should be all in here in this one place, in our environment, right? We'll never cross that barrier.
I knew you were working on it. Good deal. Anything else? Any other parking lot items? Ms. Dixon, none, none on your end, down here on this end? All right, we're adjourned.